I'm going to call this the next meeting on our schedule today to order. And the time isn't up there anymore, but I'm guessing it's close to ten, ten. I mean, eleven, eleven. That was fun. Okay. Um, this is a work session. With the, sorry, work session um, that was scheduled for eleven AM. Board of Supervisors hearing room fourteen fifteen Melody Lane building G Bisbee Arizona. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. We'll begin with a roll call District one.
Crossbees here.
District two.
Rich is present.
District three Supervisor Judge is here representing District three. Members of the public may attend this meeting and I most certainly are via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app or via phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three or eight 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 six eight zero sixty seven fourteen conference ID eight nine six two eight five four seven two pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two ninety two hundred for direction. A work session is a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors. And public comment will not be taken. And today we don't just have county staff, we have our um, association staff, the County Supervisors Association. And we welcome you here. And if Craig Sullivan is the Director for County Supervisors Director, he'd like to come up and then um, our item for discussion is the County Supervisors Association Annual County Outreach Tour. Welcome. And update regarding activities of the CSA for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, including activities from the recent legislative sessions and future legislative proposals. And if you'd introduce your staff as well when you, when you're ready. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Uh, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. For the record, I'm Craig Sullivan with the County Supervisors Association. And it's really my pleasure to be here today to talk a little bit about the work that we've been doing to support the counties across our state. I do have some of our team here, so I'd like to introduce them as well. Vanessa Fielder, who's our Director of Research and Analytics. Got Jacob Emnich right here Legislative Liaison, and you all know Ivana Ortega, who's been a longtime Executive Assistant and Special Projects Manager.
Thank you.
So we all wanted to come down to present to you today and uh, report out before this board. Um, we did provide to you a fairly dense document that has a lot of activities related to our work at the Association, and it's broken down in compartments where it talks a little bit about information and capacity development, data and analytics, and of course, the legislative session. Uh, and we would like with your permission to go through some of that, but we'll just skim through it. But I do want to encourage you to ask any questions. I'd be happy to field any questions from the board as we go through them. Yep. And to be, and I do want to just thank you on behalf of your colleagues in the other counties for your partnership in our association. It's a very important collaboration, as you know, and we really enjoy serving you and your professional staff. As we all try to do uh, good work at the local level. And as you know, that involves a lot connecting with state lawmakers. And I want to extend my particular gratitude to your professional staff, Mr. Kowetchkin, his team, who always make sure that we get feedback from this county on policy issues that we're working on. It helps us serve you and the other counties. So Rich, thank you. Thank you for your diligence in that regard. But to begin with, walking through this slide deck, I do want to just brief the constituents in the room on who we are and what we do. The County Supervisors Association, as you know, is a collaboration of the fifteen counties. We're a nonpartisan forum focused on developing information, uh, serving as a, as a resource for the, the counties, and then most importantly, uh, engaging as an intergovernmental office. And serving as an intergovernmental office matters a lot because you know very well that um, the work that you do is affected by parties in other places. The state legislature, the court system, the federal government, state agencies. And so we provide an efficient hub for collaboration among all the counties and engagement with all of these external entities. And so we really enjoy serving in that capacity. Um, when I talk a little bit about capacity development, I just threw a lot of information for you here. But when we talk about capacity development, we're talking about the regular meetings that we have where we're bringing in elected officials, top policy professionals and agency heads to talk with you and your colleagues from across the state about issues that are important uh, and affect your constituencies. It gives you an opportunity to connect with them. And you can just see here a list of some of the folks that we brought through uh, the organization last year. And we are programmed for going forward. And so we're always looking for uh, ideas that you think could be a value add for you and other counties as we set that agenda. I wanted to highlight as well on the bottom, when we talk about capacity development, we're talking about the work we do regularly with what we call affiliate groups. So this is the connection we have with the managers group, the finance directors, planning directors uh, and others, including the CIOs. I saw Mr. Casey back here. Where this is where we're all trying to work as fifteen counties at the professional staff level to share information to better support work that occurs at the board level. And I also wanted to highlight on the left to some of the work that we do on various committees uh, for this county and others. And there are three big ones that are occurring now that we're all engaged in. One is focused on our work monitoring and engaging the public safety pension system. The Board of Trustees and the decisions they make. The counties have a significant uh, stake in terms of taxpayer dollars in that system being run well. We spend a lot of time providing input to their Board of Directors to try, try to get the best decisions possible. As you know, we don't control it. We need to be at the table, monitor it and influence it. Broadband is a major issue that we are serving as a, the facilitator and collaborator with the counties and the state Commerce Authority and the Governor's Office. And this is really an all hands on deck effort as we all try to figure out how to access these federal resources that are available for broadband. And so we want to continue to serve in that role. And the final item I wanted to identify here is related to the Governor's Water Council. So I'm serving on the Governor's Water Council for the counties. I know you, this board knows water policy, Ms. Judge, you've been involved in this issue for years. Um, but this council is focused on uh, groundwater issues, both in the active management areas, the regulated areas as well as rural Arizona. And as part of that effort, uh, there are conversations about developing regulatory tools that may be applicable in rural areas. And we want to make sure that the feedback is coming in from across the state on that. And it won't surprise you that the Wilcox Basin is one of those basins that's very much focused upon uh, in, in that regard. So that's occurring now, and I, I distributed an email to you yesterday about some of the progress there. We'll be talking a lot about it through the fall. Moving out of uh, the capacity development piece, I wanted to give you a few slides on our work to develop our research platform. And that's really about supervisors. You know better than I that good and, uh, good decisions require good information. And so our team has been working to develop a data platform. Uh, Ms. Fielder, who's with me here today manages this function for us. And it's all about getting information on the table that we can then use to visualize and analyze what's going on in various functions of county government and then apply those to policy decisions. Uh, and so that's a, a major effort that we continue to build on as we go forward. And this slideshow.
I just wanted to say that this, this young lady though, since she has come on to CSA. If she isn't the one that's doing it, you know, it, it appears that she is that she has been able to manipulate numbers and um, and take us to places that were easy to describe that we didn't have in the past. And so I, I think we need to give credit where credit is due. I, I mean, thank you for hiring her, but I, I just want to say that, you know, the, the work that she has done has been phenomenal, I think. And it's really raised the bar of information. And our ability to take that information and do something with it because it's, it's meaningful information now. So since we're talking about that, you know, the, the data and all, I, I put it at her feet because I think she's been the one that caused this to happen.
I, I think you're accurate. So the kudos are welcome here.
When it, when I, and just on that, when I've sat with people in the national conferences and, and we're learning about the data that's available there, you know, and usually that's just one specific, specific subject and we're looking into that. I think, oh, we have that in Arizona. Every time I've thought, well, you should see what we have, you know, and I think that, you know, the, they, a lot of people are impressed by that, but I've never had to be impressed. And ours just gets better and better. And of course, you can use the national data too. We can access that, but, but our Arizona stuff has been so good and so helpful. So thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's been a commitment of ours. And we've been grateful uh, when we got Vanessa on the team and she could start to elevate it. So it continues to build. So when we move on from just some of the, the, the data analytics that we're performing, we are branching out into significant projects that fill our research plan. These are some of the efforts that were, that are underway currently. Um, I won't talk about all of them. I will highlight the middle one, workforce recruitment and retention, because I think it's illustrative. We are all dealing with workforce issues in every function of county government uh, and every function of state government. But la- uh, last year, the legislature tasked PSPRS to put a work group together to look at this issue in law enforcement, law enforcement specifically. Um, we were assigned to that work group. And as we sat in that, uh, we recognized that there was a lot of anecdotes. There were a lot of conversations, but there wasn't a whole lot of good information to really underline. And so our team identified a grant with the Arizona Board of Regents that brought eight hundred thousand dollars to the table to conduct a study on this workforce recruitment and retention issues in law enforcement. And so our team has been focusing as the project manager on that. It's not our specific project, but we found ourselves taking the lead on managing the effort just to ensure there was good quality information in the discussion. And that's underway right now. And if you look at the next slide, you'll see the universities and the roles that they're playing. Now, this is something that we've been trying to work towards and Vanessa's building relationships at the university to try to leverage more university work and research capacity in the work that we're involved in, uh, because we want to get outside of our box and get assistance where we're able to get. This chart shows you just the research projects that I just walked through and how they're unfolding over the course of the year. Um, what I want to highlight for you here is that when we meet at our policy summit in Coconino County in October, we'll spend some time on where these projects are, share interim results with you. But we'll also be identifying projects for the next year. And so we'll talk a little bit about some, some of those priorities. We're uh, building out some ideas for you now. We'll present those in October. So that's the research piece, and I'd like to pivot a little bit into the legislative piece. Because as you know, it's a big part of what we do and serving as an intergovernmental liaison with the legislature on your behalf is something we really enjoy doing. Um, this year was remarkable. Ms. Judge, you know, from having served up there that sessions typically do not go into August. It did this year. Uh, and that means that new bills will not be effective until October thirtieth, right? So what we want to do is support you and your professional staff as they are implementing those new bills. And so Jacob uh, sent out last Friday, a summary of all the new bills that have been enacted into law and were available to help with background information on those bills as folks start working through them. But we're all in the implementation phase now, but I would like to touch on a little bit about what happened this session as it often is kind of informative. So the counties are very close to the budget. You all know this. We talk about the budget all the time. Um, this was an interesting budget year because you had a governor of a different party from the majority of the legislature, and they had to figure out how they were going to work together. What we recognized early and ultimately the whole environment did was that the, the environment had a lot of one-time money, but they ought to be concerned about ongoing expenses. And so that's really where the negotiation came down with the executive and the legislature. How much one-time money are we going to allocate? And then staying away from ongoing expenses. And that piece about not having ongoing solutions is relevant on a few things that I'll show you later. But to, but before I do that, I want to highlight how all of the money broke down. Um, there was two and a half billion dollars of one-time money that was allocated. In the budget, there were more than three hundred individual line items for various projects that were local infrastructure, things like that. Uh, unlike some, anything we've ever seen. Where'd the money go? You can see on the left in those major buckets, and it won't surprise you. Transportation projects, water projects, housing, school, facilities issues, a lot of pent-up capital types of issues. What's I find very noticeable in this, and it's not really highlighted well on this slide overhead, is the ending balance in fiscal year twenty twenty four, which I put in the red box. And that suggests that the legislature planned to have just under eight million dollars of an ending cash balance at the end of fiscal year twenty four. So they spent all the money that was on hand. Uh, and and that was the priority among, among the members. That's not as concerning as it could be as we see the economy softening because they do have a large rainy day fund, which they did not have. Will went into the Great Recession. They had one, but it wasn't as large. Uh, but nonetheless, they spent all their cash is basically what they did. Now, what we've put here for you is just breaking down transportation projects, water projects, local projects by counties where you can see the money went. Um, and this is where members who were allocated twenty or thirty million dollars uh, were just able to identify specific projects they want. About seventeen million dollars came to Cochise County. Um, and some of that money comes to the county, some of it goes to Sierra Vista for projects, uh, Wachuka City and the Douglas Port of Entry. But these are all um, infrastructure projects, uh, for the most part in this region. On the next slide, you see a little bit of how this money mapped across various counties. And what's relevant to Cochise County is in the lower left. Water project grants. There were some resources that were allocated for irrigation districts to do uh, water projects. I think that's along the San Pedro. You can see the six million dollars that came to Cochise County under transportation, for I believe it's pronounced Mosen Road uh, drainage. And then you see some of the other resources that went around to some of your colleague counties. So it was all a one-time project type of affair. Now, that one-time nature and that, um, for lack of a better word, transactional nature, saying, members, what project do you want? Did keep off the table some big ticket items. And one of those was our effort to pay down the elected officials' retirement debt. This is a contractual obligation. It's a closed plan. We have to pay it. And so our team has been trying to figure out what's the most cost-effective way to pay that down. We've done that through engagement with the PSPRS Board of Trustees, adjusting some of their assumptions. But the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee called us in last fall to ask for an idea to do it collaboratively. That plan would have required about four hundred million dollars of one-time money from the state. But it would have saved the taxpayers about six hundred and seventy-seven million dollars over the life of that repayment. We were very proud of the analytics that went into designing that plan, but the legislative environment didn't allow for something like that because of the project-based transactional nature. And so we were disappointed that things that would have been really, really good for the taxpayers long-term uh, were not viable in this environment when the cash most certainly was there. Similarly, uh, we were asking for resources to go into boxes at the ACA and at ADOT to be available for matching grants for transportation and for broadband. They did put some money in that, but it probably would have been mindful or worthwhile to put a little bit more money into those boxes, but nonetheless, they put in twenty-three million and twelve million uh, into those two boxes. And we continue to work on the probation piece. The legislature's been adjusting the model about how pro-state funded probation officers are paid for by the state and created some language that would create a cost shift to the counties under certain conditions. Um, we did work with Mr. Gallin in the budget when that language was contained in there, and he helped remove it. Uh, so I want to extend my appreciation to him, but that issue's not gone away. And so we do have to work with the court system uh, to ensure that the state and the legislature to make sure that a permanent policy is put in place that doesn't shift more of the court costs to the counties for probation. As you know, we run bills for our counties. It's one of the things we identify at the summit. Um, these are just the four bills we took to the legislature. Jason Emnet on our team ran those bills and we're very grateful for his hard work and efforts to get those to the finish line. So they're law now. A big part of what we do is what we call reactive advocacy. And this is just responding to the hundreds of bills that touch county operations. Counties are creatures of statute, right? And so every time the legislature comes in, they can change the rules. So our team and Jacob and uh, and, and Robin Hilliard, who, who was with us during the last session, review every bill, and then they convene our legislative policy committee and get feedback from our counties to make decisions. And Supervisor English, I want to thank you for your role in participating on our legislative policy committee. You bring a lot of experience and wisdom to that dialogue, and I'm grateful for it. So there's a lot of times when the conversation's stuck and you give it a little nudge and we get to the right outcome. So thank you for bringing that.
We're pleased with her doing that. Thank you.
Um, every Friday morning. So it was a good year working with lawmakers. So I do want to say that when we brought issues of concern, they were very responsive and we got a lot of bills amended and defeated things we were concerned with. But the next few slides will just walk through some issues just to give you a flavor of it, and I won't dig into a whole lot of detail. But this slide, slide will show you just the diversity of policy areas that our team has to respond to and be involved in stakeholder meetings, review bills, get analysis from the counties. So it really is a, a, an, an all hands on deck hard, hard effort during session. This slide shows you the record-breaking number of vetoes that happened this year, uh, which I think is just kind of a neat graphic. I think it's important to note that the, most of the bills that were vetoed were party line bills. All right. The governor sent a signal in her State of the Union that she wanted to see some collaboration on both sides of the aisle. It's the prerogative of the legislature to send to her what they want. A lot of the bills she vetoed were strict party line bills. There were some bills that were bipartisan, and those are important for us because those are often things that mean they'll come back and we need to work on those things like the uh, cottage food bill, the tamale bill that was out there.
Do you think tamales will be sold in malls next year?
We're going to be selling them out of the County Supervisors Association. We need to burst revenue streams. The, the, so, but it just kind of gives you a sense of, 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 of some of those bills. All right. These are bills of concern, uh, that I won't spend a whole lot of time on. I just flagged these because these are things we did put time in, provided analysis, and they may come back. This slide shows you bills that actually were enacted. So these are various buckets of policy areas. And I think the takeaway here really is that most of these bills are just basic government adjustments. Not particularly controversial, they're not particularly challenging. They're just modifications to policy and we'll work on implementing those. I did want to identify uh, Senate Bill seventeen ten. Um, this had to do with court ordered treatment. You remember at our last summit, we had a conversation about that. This county brought the issue forward about how difficult it was to identify two MDs that were required to do that review. Mr. Gallin amended a bill to allow for an MD and a physician's assistant or other person qualified uh, in psychiatric matters to assist there. So that is a modification that may help improve that situation. The next few policy slides, I just wanted to highlight a little bit. Elections, as you know, elections have a big, been a big conversation at the legislature. There's a lot on this slide, but basically it's this. Hundred and nineteen bills were introduced relation, related to election policy. Thirty-five got to the governor's office. One was signed. So the governor's office has convened a bipartisan work group to look at elections issues. And so that's probably why they wanted to let that process work out as they identify what they may want to support going forward. So that is in place now, and we do anticipate additional conversations in the fall about what those recommendations are, and we'll have to bring those to you to get your feedback. And I do want to extend my appreciation to our partners at the Arizona Association of Counties, who represent the recorders, the election directors. And they worked very diligently and did a very fine job of bringing information to the table on election matters this year. Water policy uh, was not a big focus for the legislature this year. There are a couple of things that I want to make you aware of. One is that the program deposit uh, for the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority that was to be, to be allocated for augmentation projects. That was a three hundred and thirty million dollars was programmed. Half of that was earmarked for various water projects. So it still helps with water issues, but it's not in the bucket for water augmentation. And our statewide issue with the CAP challenges, the Colorado River challenges, really demands a big-scale water augmentation project. Um, so we do anticipate that conversation to continue to happen. The water regulatory conversation didn't happen at the legislature this year. Everyone's focused on the Governor's Council, which I mentioned to you earlier. And so we'll see how that unfolds over the course of the next few months. And I'll just wrap with this slide where, you know, one of the services we want to provide is helping you and your professional staff navigate all these things that happen at the legislature. And so this is a series of reports that have been distributed that are available to you and your professional staff to just get a bead on everything that's out there. And it covers bills that were passed, budget matters, a specific guide for the finance officers to see issues that are relevant to them. Our county revenue and expenditure report is something we call county flexibility language. So this is just our reporting process to get a bunch of information out to help you all in the implementation side. It'd be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, as soon as we wrap up one session, we have to get ready for the next one. And so I want to invite you to join us in Coconino County for our policy summit. That's where we're going to go over our research plan. We're going to set priorities going into the next legislative session. And we're going to get right back at it partnering with lawmakers on working together to do the best things we can for local constituencies. And so with that, Madam Chair and members, I do want to thank you for giving me this time to report. And I want to thank you again for your partnership in the association. We really enjoy having you part of the group and engaged with us. And I think it adds a lot of value to not just this county, but county statewide. So thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And you're welcome very much. We really appreciate what we get from the organization as well. Um, are there any questions?
I have lots of questions. With regard to corp, EOR, and PSPRS, in what sense are these state systems versus a Wall Street corporation of some kind, Wall Street?
Yeah. So thank you, Supervisor, for the question. So we're talking about um, for P, PSPRS and EOR. These are public pensions that were crafted by the legislature to serve police and fire. That's PSPRS. Detention officers and probation, that's corp, and electing officials and judges, uh, that's EOR. The PSPRS system is a constructive state law. And it's overseen by a specific governance entity and subject to public records requirements and all that as a governmental entity. It uses, it invests those dollars in the markets. And so it does get investment counsel and it brings folks in to guide that. And so that's where the money goes into the markets and other investments. And they have that responsibility. And one of the things that we saw over time was some of that in the prior governance model was in our, in our belief deficient. That they didn't have the right experts on the governing board to really guide those types of decisions. And so twenty eleven, twenty seventeen, they changed the governance structure to allow for more diversity of professionals on that. Um, we have a position on that. And there are others who have been added to it, and it's improved the governance and brought some greater expertise to it. Um, but the short answer is it's governmental entity, but those resources are invested in the markets and risky and moderate investments.
Uh, if nobody else has any questions, I'm asking another question. Any other questions? Okay. What is water augmentation? And what does this have to do with regulatory tools for water, which you mentioned earlier?
Madam Chair and Supervisor, another very good question. I'm happy to answer it. So there are two. I'm not going to say they're two separate issues, and I'll take each of them separately. I think water all kind of links when we get in the conversation. The conversation about water augmentation as it emerged at the legislature, not this last session, but two sessions ago, was about the crisis on the Colorado River and the fact that the Colorado River allocation uh, and Arizona has lower priority rights on the Colorado River. And what that means is Phoenix and Tucson were going to struggle with their water resources. And so it, it, they started to figure out, what are we going to do to bring in more resources to support the major metropolitan areas? The fear rural counties would have is, does that mean we're going to pipe water out of the rural areas? And that's a very real fear that we all have. The conversation they were having is, we need to figure out not ways to steal within the Arizona bucket, but figure out ways that bring in new water sources. So what are those? The ones that come up are pretty uh, dramatic, expensive and remarkable. Desalination projects in Mexico, desalination projects in California. Uh, folks even go off into the fanciful of pipelines bringing in water from, you know, the Midwest or what have you. And so the um, that, that in a nutshell is what it's about. How are we going to bring more water in to feed the large urban areas? Um, and what those supplies are. It's run by the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. There's a governing board on that. Two county supervisors serve in that, one from Yuma, one from Graham, just in case you ever want to discuss that with them. So that's water augmentation. The other piece I was talking about was the groundwater concerns that have elevated in recent years. And we have a situation where, when I was a kid, growing up in Maricopa County, it was all over the news about water subsidence and groundwater pumping. And at that time, there were, we knew that the Central Arizona Project was coming. But what the legislature focused on is, we've got a lot of problems and we have no regulatory structure. So they crafted a regulatory structure in nineteen eighty that was designed to protect that water and steward that resource. And what it created was the most dynamic economic boom that we've seen, really, in, in the Maricopa region. The rural areas were not part of that. They never had a regulatory structure, and that was the choice. That was the desire. And it's always been a good thing. But of late, we've seen basins in certain areas that are rapidly depleting, and they're elevating attention to the fact that few tools exist to support rural communities who wish to regulate their water supplies. As they're trying to figure out, well, what is a tool that respects the local community and allows them to come up with good decisions at the local level? So that's what that regulatory piece is all about.
Okay. What I was getting at is probably you realized it is the, the issue of exportation of our groundwater. And I would mention to my colleagues that the Campbell's knows in the tent in this regard is exportation or rearranging water from one district to another. So I would be, be against any of that, and particularly the exportation of our groundwater toward Green Valley, Tucson, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. If nobody has any more questions, I got none. What is the ratio of the governor's total share of funds in terms of grants versus the legislature's share of total funds that they administer?
I can definitely get you that answer.
Okay.
You know.
So get it. That's fine. That's great.
Yeah. She'll see if she can pull that up. So we can go on to the, the next question was just trying to, because the, the fact is, is the total funds of government is very large, and a lot of those are federal funds under the control of the governor. I think that's where you're going right now.
So what I'm talking about is the fundamental imbalance of power in Arizona government, which is like the next biggest problem after elections integrity, in my opinion. Okay. You talked about changes in the assumptions. Or adjusting the, the assumptions for EORP. Could you go into that just a little bit? What was that about?
Yeah, Madam Chairman and Supervisor, I'd be happy to. So one of the concerns we had when we were looking at how EORP was structured is they have a series of assumptions, things like payroll growth and investments. What we noticed, just in terms of historical data, is that the assumptions they were using for payroll growth were not consistent with what actual payroll was growing, and that was happening in multiple areas. And so our view was that by having assumptions that some years are right and some years are wrong, creates volatility that increases the unfunded liability and the debt for the taxpayer. So what we did, our team analyzed and worked with all the managers in the state to identify what made sense. And what we did is we recommended going to what we call a level dollar, removing some of those payroll assumptions and just taking that volatility out, because it just creates additional debt and additional liability. So it's things like that, Supervisor, that we look at, and if we're seeing it's creating more liability or volatility, we may want to look at adjusting.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. That was a very good answer, which I hope that we will all review at a later times. It hits the nail on the head with regard to being generous with other people's money and the long-term effect of it. Thank you very much. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
No question. Just a, just a comment. I've always been proud to be part of the County Supervisors Association, because I do see it as it's always operated in my mind as really nonpartisan. And so everyone that walks into that room when we have conversations is a partisan person, but I don't feel that when I'm in that room. I feel that, that we've been able to neutralize it and be able to discuss and come to consensus. Even if we don't always agree, I, I think it's healthy for us to be on the same level as, as a Maricopa or a Pima County when we're asking questions and getting answers. And I feel like that that's what happens at CSA. Is that Apache County, is Apache County the smallest? Or is Santa Cruz?
Greenly.
Greenly? You know, I, I mean, their issues are important to us. And, and so they're, they're treated with as much respect as Maricopa County is. And so that's what I'm saying is I, I think that as long as we can keep that as the, as the crux of the association, if we don't fall into some kind of idea that, you know, partisanship has a place here, then we're going to be okay. Because that's the place where I think it's all neutralized, you know, so that we, we all feel welcome there. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Senator.
And the associations, I'd like to mention that the associations are really valuable when we get to know the supervisors from other counties. Sometimes, as she mentioned, partisan, we have counties that are just like us, that are working on the same type of goals and the same type of foundation. Their constituents are very much like ours. And, and it helps to have somebody to talk to. Sometimes this county in particular doesn't always get along with Pima County as far as regulatory or anything else that our counties do. But we, but we have counties maybe a little further away that even though we were, we were taken right out of Pima County, initially we were part of Pima County, but we it's, it helps to have friends in other locations. And also, she's right, there's, it's a format there where we can talk to anyone and feel comfortable with anyone. And that is a, a very good thing in this world. But I think you could keep it. I think your supervisors will want to keep it that way. I do think so. All right. Well, if there's nothing else to present.
You must have the statistic that, because I know that's not your phone. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Answer for Supervisor. So the answer is about two-thirds. In fiscal year twenty-three, the total fund budget was about sixty-three billion. Forty-one billion were not appropriated funds. Twenty-one billion or thereabouts were appropriated funds. So legislative two-thirds are outside of the legislature's hands.
Is that typical? You said that twenty-twenty-three. Is that about what goes?
That's typically what we've seen.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, as we've been.
Because I know, when I was in the legislature, we were, we had eight billion we were working with in our appropriated funds, and we were looking for another billion dollars wherever we could find it. It was really tough. And I thought the governor had quite a bit more than sixteen billion that he, that she was working with.
You may have seen it sometimes, Mr. Bennett used to do a tissue box demonstration of this, and it would show this massive pile of tissue boxes that were the federal funds.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I really appreciate you coming today and, and this was very helpful. Your staff is here. Was there anything? I saw the nods and smiles, and that's good to have you here. Was there anything that anyone, Mr. Karwatska, do you have anything you'd like to say?
When is lunch?
Right now, right now. I can please hold this up.
I just, we do have Christine Roberts here, and that is not part of the discussion. Workplace work session is lunch, right? Opening law violations. Okay.
I thought she was buying.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Did you have any comments?
I just want to say thank you for coming, and CSA is an extremely valuable tool for the administration point. I consider them the four-one-one for counties. If everyone remembers what the four-one-one was, well, information.
Yeah.
They get it.
That's great.
Very quickly too, just like four-on-one. I call and someone answers. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And this meeting is, oh, did you have something else? You went like that.
No, I just want to thank you again. It's really a pleasure to be here and visit. Appreciate the time.
Okay, then the meeting is adjourned.